And I think the homelessness presentation first. Do you want to tee that up?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Council. Obviously, an incredibly important topic, but today we wanted to take some time to make sure that you saw a memo that our homeless strategy officer sent yesterday. And it describes the funding of options and the update on homelessness funding for the mayor council. So this is a very short presentation of only a couple of slides. But we wanted to, on a day like this, in case you hadn't had a chance to read that memo, knowing that there will be many future conversations as we move forward. But with that, I'll turn it over to our homeless strategy officer, Diana Gray.
Thank you, sir. Good morning, Mayor Adler, Mayor Pro Tem Harper Madison, and council members. So today will be a very brief update on spending regarding homelessness. As, as I will speak about in a moment, we do also have our summit beginning this afternoon in about 13 minutes. So I will be moving over into that meeting fairly soon. But there are a couple of things that I wanted to speak about, really as part of our context for going into that planning process and for our discussions as a city overall. Obviously, in a couple of weeks, we will be also briefing council on the HEAL initiative. But between now and then, we and the community at large will be engaging in a very significant conversation around our efforts to combat homelessness, not just the city, but with the broad partners across the community. And so we will be convening at 2:00 PM for the opening plenary with community leaders, service providers, business groups, philanthropists, and, and a wide variety of other folks for a week-long virtual summit to address unsheltered homelessness in particular. And so the aim of that summit is to develop concrete goals, a schedule, and an implementation plan to significantly reduce unsheltered homelessness in Austin. Of course, the city's resources will play an important role in any strategies that are developed. And so today, there are a couple of pieces around the, our financial strategies and spending on homelessness that I wanted to share with you that I think both help us understand where we have been over the last year or so and where we are headed in the future. So we can go ahead and go to the next slide. The two topics that I'm covering today very briefly, first, relate to fiscal year-end spending 2020, around some dollars that were unexpended at the end of the year, and some questions have remained around what those dollars were, why they were unexpended at that point, and their disposition. And so we will speak to that. And then, second, I want to give you a brief overview of the programming that we project for the additional $6.5 million in general fund resources that council allocated to Austin Public Health for this fiscal year. So the slide that you are looking at relates again to the $31 million that was categorized as unspent budget related to homelessness at fiscal year-end 20. That is of a total $73.4 million in our budget that related to homelessness overall. I think it's important to note that that is across departments, and it is also across uses. So these included funds that are intended to prevent homelessness, funds that support our crisis response in terms of shelter and street outreach, et cetera, the management of our public spaces in terms of the work that many of our departments do to maintain our public spaces and provide some services to our neighbors in encampments. And then finally, the efforts to rehouse those who are experiencing homelessness. So of the $31 million that was unexpended, there are two primary categories. One is the dollars that were reallocated, and then there are dollars that were encumbered but not expended during that fiscal year. And so the, I'll address the first category initially, and that is that during the course of fiscal year 20, we reallocated about $5.8 million in dollars that were, had been earmarked for homelessness toward the COVID response. And that related to a variety of things. Some of those dollars were saved because of functions we could not complete during fiscal year 20 because of COVID. Therefore, we were able to use them more directly in the response. Some of that response was targeted at people experiencing homelessness, and some of it was used more broadly across the community. So that's the 5.8, about not quite 20% of the total. Past that, we had funds that were either to be spent over a number of years or were set aside for special purposes. The lion's share of that is 38% of those dollars had been budgeted for ongoing or future capital projects, including affordable housing development, like Aspero at Rutland, which is a project upcoming, affordable housing project and permanent supportive housing project sponsored by Caritas, improvements at the Arch, and the like. We also have multi-year contracts that often correspond to our federal funding, where the, either that will be a multi-year grant or the fiscal years don't quite line up. So that was just shy of a quarter of the 31 million. We had anti-displacement funds that have been set aside within HPD, and we have not yet expended those. HPD was in the process of engaging their anti-displacement officer, and so those dollars rolled over into the fiscal year 21 budget and will be utilized in the future. And then finally, there are $4.8 million in the fiscal year 20 budget that were set aside in the reserve for Pay for Success. You may recall that that total reserve is 6 million. The other 1.2 had come from a previous fiscal year. So I think, you know, happy to entertain additional questions about the specifics of those subcategories, but I think it's important for us to be very transparent about how we're using our funds, how well we're spending down, and so that we have an understanding going forward, not only in this fiscal year, but as we look to fiscal year 22, of which of those resources are still, we still count with, but are already obligated to other purposes, and which were reallocated or are already being spent down currently. So I will then move on to the next slide and speak to the $6.5 million in new GF funds that were allocated to Austin Public Health for this fiscal year. So those dollars, as you know, were intended to utilize for our efforts to combat homelessness with a real priority for creating services that would help permanently rehouse folks who were experiencing homelessness. So as we look at those funds, we see that the, in the first year, we will have projects coming online later in the fiscal year. So for example, we have two hotels currently under contract that we hope will be functional in the last quarter of the fiscal year. Therefore, we will have a partial year of operations and services for those hotels. And we are looking at some other, other uses that will come online in the coming months. Because those projects will not need a full year's budget, it also allows us the ability to fully fund the $3 million that council asked us to set aside for the HEAL initiative out of this year's fiscal budget. And we then have still not quite $2 million that, that we have some flexibility around that could be utilized should we identify an additional hotel during this fiscal year. It could conceivably be utilized for improvements to those hotels, should that be necessary, or for additional rapid rehousing or other permanent housing needs. I have included here fiscal year 22, acknowledging that we have not yet gone into the fiscal year 22 budget process, because I wanted to show that when we move into a full fiscal year of services, what you see is that the majority of the $6.5 million is then dedicated to the services and permanent supportive housing. That is the, probably the most scarce resource in our community, and so I do think it is the most strategic use of these dollars overall. And so I would anticipate that over time, for a funding source like this, we would expect to see that be at least a plurality, I guess, of the dollars that we spend for permanent housing out of the APH budget. Again, this is just the APH budget. But that you would also anticipate seeing rapid rehousing dollars, operations for our hotels, and then some flexible funding that we can utilize to address needs as they come up. I do want to make one additional note before I open it to questions, that one of the reasons we are able to concentrate dollars on permanent supportive housing services within this funding mix is when we are able to leverage the partnership of other funders. And in particular, the Housing Authority of the City of Austin recently put out a request for proposal for project-based vouchers for Housing First, PSH. And while it is, the board has not yet approved that funding recommendation, it is on the agenda, and we expect to have at least 50 project-based vouchers to support the operations of one of our hotels. And so that's really critical, and I think an example of a great way for us to partner with our other jurisdictions and utilize our dollars wisely. So given that I am now at 2 o'clock, I will wrap up, happy to take any questions either now or later, and look forward to ongoing conversation about how we utilize these resources.
Thank you, Diana. And again, this was meant to be just an overview of that memo that was sent yesterday. As Diana mentioned, there will be a work session briefing at our next meeting on April 6th, specifically around HEAL, and then some additional updates that will come from the summit that is kicking off as we speak. But I'll pass it back to you, Mayor, if there's, with your permission, just maybe one or two questions before we excuse Diana to get to that other meeting that she has to present.
I understand. Kathy?
Yeah, I do have several questions about the memo. I'll try to keep them fast. Thank you, Diana, for the update. I see a couple, two references to Aspero at Rutland, and I'm not clear if there's money for the same project, or one is under the AHFC has committed 4 million in capital funds. Some of it's going to be used for Aspero at Rutland, some is going to be used for Burnett Place, and then later on, it talks about 1.9 million having been committed to the Aspero at Rutland. So is it, what's the total amount, and is it coming from both of those two sources?
So there are two sources. Those two sources are general obligation bonds through the RHDA program and housing trust fund dollars. And it gets a little confusing here. The total commitment to Aspero on the capital side is 8 million. Approximately 4 million of that came out of fiscal year 20 budget. The rest, you know, fell into this fiscal year. So that, that 4 million of the 8 million comes out of general obligation bonds, and the 1.9 million refers to our commitment to provide operating subsidies or rental subsidies for that building. And that has been critical to the financial health of the project and also to securing the tax credits that provide a good deal of the gap financing on the, on the capital side.
Okay, so four of the, so four of the eight came from general obligation bonds, four of the eight came from housing trust fund dollars as well as something else.
Yeah, let me, let me see if I can do better. I apologize. $8 million in general obligation bonds, approximately four of which, I believe, were in fiscal year 20, and the balance in fiscal year 21, which is why it was not addressed in the memo. And the 1.9 is a commitment for operating dollars that comes out of the housing trust fund, local housing voucher program.
Thank you. And then, let's see, the renovation of roadway at 3.5 million, do you, do you have or could you provide us with what the estimate of renovation cost was at the time that we purchased it? That just seems higher than what we thought we would spend in renovating it.
Sure, I do not have that initial, that initial number at top of mind, but we can certainly get it. And I know that there were some conditions discovered as we moved into the renovation, as will happen sometimes with existing buildings, that increased that cost, but we can absolutely get comparison.
Thank you. And I guess, City Manager, I would like to know, I would like more information about who on our staff and what level of outside consultants we are using to really get an upfront, a very clear estimate upfront of what our, our intended expenses are. We had some conversations about this early on, and I know Echo was indicated that they had that expertise, but I, I really need to have a better understanding of, of what kind of assessment we're doing of these properties before we bought them, before we purchased them, and who on our staff has that expertise, and when we don't have that expertise in-house, who are we enlisting to provide that level of expertise?
Okay, shall we go to?
And then, my last question is, what is the timeframe for envision Pay for Success, for, for launching the permanent supportive housing that was envisioned with the Pay for Success? I understand our funding model is changing, but we certainly have, have a, have a high level of need for those units. And so I'm wondering, we passed that several years ago, I'm just wondering where we are in actual.
Correct. I do not have a concrete timeline and look forward to providing that to you guys. I think that both we and our partners are anxious to get there. What I will say is that in the ongoing conversations, some of the discussion that is happening now is about which of our funders could be ready to begin their funding action during the current fiscal year, that it might be sequenced, right? But we have not really worked out the, sort of the, the nuts and bolts of that yet. And so I can commit to coming back to council with a briefing on that.
I think you said Anne, is that right?
I did say Anne Kitchen, aren't you? Steve, you can go quickly.
Very, very quickly then. Thank you, Diana. This is very helpful, and I look forward to our conversation on April 6th. My question is really for Mr. Quonk, for City Manager. City, just, this is just a comment as, as we move into the summit. I think that it would be helpful for us all, us and the community to understand how they might contribute ideas. It's intended to be a community conversation, but there isn't a mechanism at the moment for the community to actually participate. And so I just ask you, as you learn more about this, to let us know so that we can let our community members know how to participate. You know, it's, it's, it's hard to, in a COVID world, to actually do a summit in a way that people would normally participate, so I understand that. I just, but what I, what I'm not clear on is if people have ideas, how they contribute them, because when this comes, you know, when, when the summit is, is, is completed, I'm excited about getting, getting the ideas that come out of it and using those ideas that can help guide us in the community, but it won't be a guide if it's not, if it's not, doesn't listen to community input. So that's, that's what I'm wanting to understand. So City Manager, if you can just help us, as this summit unfolds, understand how people have an opportunity to contribute lots to that.
Absolutely, council member. Thank you for raising that, and I'll make sure to both pass that up to some of the folks that have been helping to organize this, but also give a commitment to you and your colleagues that as this discussion does happen, that we're not only providing updates, but also creating space within council to have conversations as they unfold as well. Let me know if Diana wants to?
Okay.
And I look forward to that more complete answer too, Manager. I made the same inquiries this morning, Anne, and, and they have now established an email at summit@austinchamber.com. That's where Mandy is going to facilitate a summit. We'll be receiving questions and comments. There'll probably be a more complete answer that the manager can give to us, but right off the bat, that's an email that we can share. I'm going to hold most of my questions on this, Diana, until the April 6th report, because I think that's going to, to, to be more complete than, than we could do here today. When you come back on April 6th, and we're talking about Funding for Homelessness Challenge, which I think is, as I go around the city and talk to people, more than anything else, what people bring to me, they want a, an immediate addressing of, of challenges they see, and they want to have an understanding of long-term, what is the plan, and what does it cost, and how long does it take to get there, and how do we measure success along the way? So talking about what we're spending in the context of, of what it would actually cost to do the job will be real important to me, and I hope we can get into that. And in that regard, rather than just making programs fit to the allocated sums you have, I'd like to know what it would cost to actually do the HEAL that council passed, the council member Kitchen brought up, and extend it, if we wanted to actually implement that citywide? How do we do that? I mean, what's the timeframe, and what does it cost? But also the long-term plan with respect to the permanent supportive housing and how that interrelates to the other things. So if you could make part of that briefing that's coming up, both to address the American Rescue Plan and conversations with Travis County, the Waller Creek TERS that we had talked about, identifying as additional source of funding, the TPID, if that's still additional plastic, additional funding categories that come out of the rescue plan that are not part of the city or state or county dollars, you know, the possibility with TRE with the county, where we both put something on a ballot if the public would want to vote for dedicated funds that could only be used for this purpose. I think that would be helpful. And then I have some of the questions, I think, that Kathy was asking with respect to Aspero and some of the other projects. I'd like to have more detail on these items so that I can better understand them. You don't have to go through them now, but just a lot more detail with respect to those items. And then also how the Pay for Success dollars relate to whatever the informed recommendation is coming from you after participating in the summit. I don't know if some of these expenses might be picked up by potentially other funders, or what is the kind of, the, the kind of the collective approach to this when we bring in our partners like Haka, and you mentioned additional dollars they have. Echo's got additional dollars from the federal government, as well as money raised from Representative AOC, that I know they've indicated a willingness to, to put at play. So when you come back on April 6th, I'm hoping that, that we get also a really broad discussion of what it would take for us to really deal both with the short term and the long term. And then let's see what dollars we need and where they may come from, and where we have to go raise philanthropically or with our partners and the like.
I look forward to it.
Okay. P O, council member, through you?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. What I want to know too is the, what's the target population that you're focusing on to, to fill the roadway in? You know, and I know that in the past that, you know, we, we got into trouble there at the roadway because it only had one sink, and that was in the restroom, and they had to redo all the floors. And then it came up short, and we had to add additional funds to it so that they could complete the job there. But I'm very interested in, on the target population and, and basically all the target population, whether they're women with children or SOR, and the strategy and getting people like that into shelters and to residence, permanent residents. So it would be very interesting to see what kind of plans that we have that we're going to be looking at.
Thank you, Mayor. Allison, you want to close us up?
Yes, thank you. In the memo, you described the Pay for Success Reserve Fund, and it suggests that the financial mechanism for the project will change, but the program design will be the similar, be similar. I was really appreciative of the original financial mechanism and its creativity, and would like to know what that new model is.
I loved the original model as well, I will say, having been involved with Echo from the, from the beginning. I think that what we ran into, and, and you, you may know a piece of this, is that for some of the jurisdictions, that repayment mechanism was difficult for them to wrap their heads around in terms of their ability to justify that or to logistically make it work. The, at present, though, the mechanism is likely to be much more of a direct contracting mechanism. The questions that need to be answered center around whether those would be, for example, parallel contracts, or whether there might be, for example, some sort of an intergovernmental. And so the, since there are multiple funders, the sequencing and form of those contracts needs to be determined, but the investors are no longer part of the model at this stage, which does reduce our transaction costs to some degree. And we would be looking at thinking through when we bring in both the public and the private funders, because we have a couple of substantial foundations in the mix, and which pieces of the overall initiatives, initiative, excuse me, that they fund.
So what will be council's engagement in those choices, since we've already set aside the money and?
So I think that our assumption is that, given the shift in the financial mechanism, if you will, and, and that transaction, that we would certainly need to come back to, to council, whether that would require formal action or not, it is unclear to me at present, partially because we were still in that planning process, but we will certainly do that.
But the basic idea of targeting 200 to 250 chronically homeless individuals with a lot of, you know, services and, and supports, which then alleviates costs at various other systems, is still going to be the basic
That is correct.
underlying idea. Okay, thank you. And then I was wondering if, I don't know if it's you or Mayor Adler, if someone can speak a little bit to this summit and the goal of the summit, and who's involved, and the, the role council with respect to that, obviously to target and solve homelessness as a community endeavor, and something that we need as a community to engage everyone and all organizations and the nonprofit and the private sector, et cetera. But the, but the summit itself is a little bit opaque, and since we're in work session, we're not going to be there for the initial plenary. So I was just hoping that someone could provide a little bit more clarity on the goals and who's participating.
So I think that in December, there was a facilitated conversation between Echo and DAA that they organized to try to get past what had been kind of a years-long logger jam between them about whether or not there would be attention paid to the long-term public supportive housing component, long-term plan, and developing a long-term plan, which obviously costs a lot, but takes a long time to do. And the theory of approaching this more in terms of the immediacy of the encampments that people see. Out of that facilitated conversation, it became apparent that, that those entities were moving to two very different places than they had been at historically, creating, I think, an opportunity to reframe and to, to join together, to, to come up with a solution to both those at the same time that, that everybody would participate in. They brought in another facilitator out of Houston to try to advance those concepts as well as those new as well as those new agreements or unions that were developing between some of the service providers and some of the groups that have been working on this. The summit, I think, is just the next step in, in trying to, to see where to in ever-increasing the large group, where those agreements might be and where there might be commitments, both philanthropically or otherwise, to, to really come up with a, a long-term plan that has goals and measurements along the way, as well as the, whatever is decided short-term. So there's not a plan yet. It's more just a facilitated conversation. I know that they tried really hard to do it at a time when it wasn't on top of a council meeting, but as your manager adds, there are, you know, lots of people that are involved. But they're going to make it so that it's available to the council, together with the opportunity to be able to communicate directly with a facilitator out of Houston with respect to ideas or thoughts that, that we'd like to, to also bring to, to bear. I would hope that at some point, hopefully within the next couple of weeks, there's a kind of a report back of possible direction or action. I appreciate the involvement, manager of you and your staff and in helping with that, as well as all the other organizations in the city that are, that are participating. I'm anxious to see what that, what that is. You know, my belief is that we can't go back. That, that wasn't something that worked. But yet I think that there's a desire in the community for us to be able to do something different than what we're doing now and to be able to have for the community a new and different direction, I think, would be really welcome for us to be able to consider. And I think that's what's growing out of the summit. I don't know, Diana, if there's anything you'd add to that?
Very briefly, Mayor, thank you. I would say, and, and I appreciate the, the question, Councilmember Alter. I, you know, I will say first that as I entered this role, you know, something that was a priority for me, summit or no summit, was that we as a city and as a broader community needed to be able to clearly articulate our strategies with some hard numbers around them, right? Where are we headed? How are we getting there? How are we going to do it? Not to suggest that that is, and in fact importantly, not only the city in that leadership role and in that resourcing role. The summit is intended not as starting anew. We have an action plan that council endorsed in 2018, produced by Echo. That action plan, however, will be strengthened by some additional specificity around how much we intend to increase our capacity, by when, and, and who is going to, how we're going to resource it. And so I think that, you know, those are fundamentally the pieces we hope we come out of your summit with.
Kathy?
Yeah, I just want to echo Councilmember Alter's question and, and I think it was Councilmember Kitchen who asked the manager. I think, I think your, the mayor has been on the leadership team and some of the city staff have been as well. I think the rest of the council manager, as you know, because I've indicated this, very, we have very little information about who is participating and the kinds of activities that are, are being organized around it. And I'm, I'm certainly very eager to learn more and, and hope that you will make sure that, that we are, are made aware of that information. It's a wonderful thing to have community organizations and community members involved in this conversation. And it eventually needs to really be one that involves a broad, a broad array of, of individuals. And, and certainly it needs to be a conversation about which the rest of your council is aware.
Absolutely, Councilmember.
I understand and agree. I also appreciate Diana, in the memo that you sent out, a return to the bi-weekly short briefing to council on progress on this challenge. I think that will be helpful. Allison?
Thank you. Just very briefly to, to, I want to say thank you for, to the mayor and Diana for answering my question there. You know, I think it's really important for the whole community to come together to meet this challenge. And, you know, one of the things that we have heard, you know, over and over from consultants is the need to strengthen various elements of our system that are not always the city's functions. And that the importance of leveraging funds, not just city funds, ideally state and federal funds as well and philanthropic dollars, because the magnitude of the challenge is big, the people's lives who are at stake and who are impacted are many. And so, you know, I, I just want to say I appreciate the people who are devoting time to these questions. And, you know, my own feeling is that many of them may not have, some of them are experts in the field and have spent a lot more time than we have, but others of them will be people who are entering the conversation, you know, and still catching up to speed. So I'm, I'm assuming that some of the summit is going to be stuff that we've already tread. And to the extent that we can bring people together and get everyone up to speed and moving forward with a strategic plan that the community as a whole can move forward, I just want to say that I appreciate the efforts to push in that direction.
Leslie?
Thanks, Steve. I wanted to make sure I understood who the convener of the summit is. On the one hand, it sounded like it was the DAA and Echo. On, on the other hand, it sounded like it was the city. And it, it matters who's convening it because they're the ones who are issuing the invitations and so forth. And I had noticed that there was a complete lack of information coming my way as to any aspects of this other than it was happening. And at one point, my staff and I had asked for a formal update on it. And then we, we did find out from other parties that it wasn't a city convened summit, but that the city, of course, is playing a role. So I don't know who to ask that question of because I get the idea that none of us is actually the convener. But anybody want to take a stab at it?
I think the convener was the group that was involved in the December facilitated conversation between Echo and the DAA. So it would be Echo, it would be DAA, it would be the chamber. It would be Lynn Meredith, who was brought in to help, and me. And the point is really well taken about the inability thus far for the council to be able to meaningful participate. I'm lobbying for that within the group. I don't have the controlling oar in that room. But I think that this conversation that we're having right now, I really appreciate and I think will be a real value add in that larger conversation. The plenary that's happening today is really to bring at least some other members of the community up to where we already are. It's a panel conversation that people will be watching. Kirk Watson is moderating it. And it, it goes over and will reinforce things that the, the council has been going over in much greater detail over the last year and a half, two years. It's to teach vocabulary and.
That's super helpful. And I just reiterate a concept that I think many of us from one time or another have said explicitly that it does have to be a community and actually frankly beyond our community. It needs to be a regional, it needs to be a statewide, it needs to be a national effort. The City of Austin doesn't have enough money to solve the homelessness problem from the beginning to the end and continue to sustain it forever into the future, because new people become homeless unfortunately. So for me, the only way really forward on this in any meaningful way is if it is in literal collaboration and coordination with folks everywhere across the board. And so I'm grateful that the city is not going to be seen, I hope, as frankly the leader, because it's well beyond our capacities and it gives people a sense that it's only the city you should look at for any assistance and to lift it up. We have to find a way to push through that wall. And I'm hopeful that that's what one of the major outcomes of this summit will be, because I think that will be a big win for everyone here, not just, not just the DIES, but the entire city.
And I assure you, that was the design, which comes with certain benefits and drawbacks. And we have identified both of them in this conversation in the last 10 minutes. Anne?
Just a final thing. The reason I raised the question that I did is that I appreciate, and I think this is an important effort, and I appreciate the folks that are putting it on. I just, at the end of the day, don't want to oversell as a community consensus if there isn't a route for the community to express their opinions. So that's why I ask City Manager to just find, find that route if you can or just pass that along. Like I said, I really appreciate the effort that's being put into this. It's necessary. I'm glad, as Councilmember Poole said, that it's community, community-led. That's important. But I, at the end of the day, I don't want to be talking about an implementation plan that is a community consensus when the community didn't have the opportunity to express their, their thoughts.
Okay, Diana.